Call this meeting to order? Is this on?
Blowing at you.
It is. If we could all please rise, the Honorable Councilmember Brandon McCullough will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening and welcome to the September 8th study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,929th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, September 20th, 2021. The only member of council not with us this evening is Councilmember White. I do not have any announcements to make. I made all the announcements I had to make at the first meeting. Does anyone else in the council have any announcements? All right, at this time, we go to audience communication. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, we will proceed with the rest of our agenda. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or the city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the agenda of the regular meeting of Monday, September 20th, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach either podium. There's one on each side of the room when the item is called, and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium and you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you. In the minutes for the meeting, it will also let those watching at home and the council members know who is speaking to them. And with that, we start in with new business. This is a block party request from Mr., I hope this is a Mr., Visar Jitaj, and I'm sure I've mispronounced that name, so I look forward to being corrected, to be held on Sunday, October 31st, 2021, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Mallory Drive between Six Mile Road and Newburgh Road with no rain date requested. And could you please give me the correct pronunciation of your name?
Oh, it's Visar Jitai.
Jitai?
Jitai, yeah.
Well, Jitai?
Jitai.
Close? Okay.
I'm on 37190 Mallory Drive. We did this block party last year for Halloween, and it was a success. It limited the traffic through the sub. We just have a one-way in and out, so it worked pretty well, and I think the parents felt more comfortable having their toddlers out.
Great.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I'm going to offer an approving for consent. When I first saw this, I thought this was brilliant. This is actually a brilliant move on Halloween to do this, especially in a neighborhood like yours that's direct access off of Newburgh Road. So I commend you, and I'll also note, some of us up here have been around for the entire process of this neighborhood going up, and we had a lot of conversations in regards to the types of houses that are there now and all that kind of stuff. So it's good to see that you're starting right off the bat and building that sense of community in the neighborhood. So, congrats to you and good job.
Thanks.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
See ya.
Yeah.
Will it be Albanian music at this event?
Okay.
I'm looking forward to this and looking forward to these sorts of events in our community. As you look at diverse community and the makeup of our Livonia residents, it's awesome to see these sorts of community blocks, block parties happen, and I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to come if council members are invited.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, we're just having a little bit of fun with Mr. Donavick and reminding him that I think the-
He might care the children.
I think the ordinance requires that interpreter be provided if any of the council members break into foreign tongues, so, anyway, that's neat. And Mr. Donavick, of course, will know exactly how to pronounce your name, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, but thank you, and thank you for your patience with my struggle to pronounce your name correctly.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
But that's fantastic, so thank you.
Yes, have a good night, thanks.
Anybody else? All right, I think you're all set.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Item number two is a request to approve and recognize the Clarenceville High School Homecoming Parade, the parade route, the closing of certain city streets, and request to designate and authorize Senior Police Officer Michael Archillian to sign the Wayne County Road Commission permit on behalf of the city to close a portion of Middle Belt Road with the city to assume liability for any damage claims that may arise as a result of the road closure. This comes to us from Kevin Murphy, the Athletic Director of Clarenceville, to be held on Friday, October 8th, 2021, beginning at 6:15.
Madam President.
Yes.
So this is an item that has come before us quite regularly every year. Clarenceville is our school district in every way, so I just want to commend them on doing these kind of activities, and I'll offer an approving for the consent agenda.
All right, any objections? All right, we will place it on the consent agenda. Item number three is a request to approve hourly rate increases. This is coming to us from the Department of Civil Service for the transit and grant classification for a three-year period beginning on December 1st, 2021. And we have Denise Mayer, our Director of Human Resources, and Ms. Felicia Cross, our Director of Transportation, do I have that correct, who is here tonight representing Brandy Isaacson and the Housing Department. Good evening, Ms. Mayer.
Good evening, Madam President, council members. Nice to see everyone again. I'm back. You have before you a request from our Director of Housing, Brandy Isaacson, looking for a rate increase for our temporary grant and transit?
Yes.
Transit employees. There's a total of 23 employees that we're looking at, and they have not had an increase since 2018. That was due in part to the fact that the unemployment rate was so high and the minimum wage did not increase, so we also did not increase their wages. Ms. Isaacson has expressed a concern that the transit and grant employees are aware that the regular city employees annually get an increase for cost of living that is bargained by the unions throughout the city, and the transit and grant employees are feeling a little undervalued because they haven't had an increase. So she's proposing an hourly rate increase of 4% December 1st, 2021, 2% December 1st, 2022, and 3% December 1st, 2023. And we have been before you in the past to bring a three-year rate increase proposal, so that's not unusual. We usually do come with a three-year proposal. We would be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy.
I appreciate the fact that they haven't had a raise in a long time. Neither have I, but that's okay. But all I'm saying is, I think it's time to give them a raise, so I'm going to ask for an approving resolution on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So looking at these wages here, just for context, you know, if I didn't know better, I would think that Ms. Mayer is intentionally trying to come before us as much as possible while she can.
Before I retire.
Right.
Yeah, it was my dream.
Dream come true.
Nightmare.
So, I'm looking at the wages here, and you have the positions listed that this is included as bus driver, assistant office manager, program office manager, dispatcher, dispatcher two. And I think the top rate here for a program office manager in step four would be 2218. And for context, at my employer at Lawrence Tech, there's a bagel shop on campus, and they're currently paying people $19 an hour to staff the bagel shop. So that puts this into context, in terms of quality people have a lot of options right now, and we have to keep our good people around and compensate them appropriately for many different reasons, but chief among them, there's a lot of competition to take them and their services. So I am with Councilwoman Toy. I am tempted to put it on the regular just to make Ms. Mayer come back again.
I would request you don't do that because I will be at a conference that night.
Well, I won't on this one, but no promises on the next one.
Okay. One at a time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. So these are, in one sense, frustrating because you want to keep property tax, you want to keep people's taxes low in the community, you want to be a good steward of tax dollars, but to some of my colleagues' comments, at the same time, you have to fairly compensate people, and especially in today's job market, people, quality employees, have a lot of options, and regardless of what industry you're in, you're seeing increases in every position. You can make the argument if they deserve it or not deserve it, that's not what we're here for, at least me right now, but ultimately, we need to retain people. And if you look at other communities and what they're doing, or other jobs in the same industry, but in the private sector, you're trying to compete against them and at the same time provide a good service to our residents, because 90-some thousand residents, when they contact the city, they expect their requests to be handled and handled quickly, and we can't do that if we're understaffed. So I understand these wage increases are tough, because again, you want to be a good steward of tax dollars, me, my personal belief, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we're taking care of our people and retaining our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, through Ms. Mayer, I just got a question. I know my colleague, Vice President Barr, brought this up the last time. Is this, do you foresee, you know, I know the next item to, do we have a lot more of these coming? Just out of curiosity.
That's a good question, Councilman. When Vice President Barr asked me that, at that moment in time, there were only, there was only one or two more coming, but as you can see, I'm before you again tonight with three. I do know there's another one currently in the works for another three positions, so honestly, I don't know when this might be done.
Sure. And no, I appreciate it, I fully support these increases. I think that, again, we are in an interesting time where we have to stay competitive. So, you know, you're in the middle of process change, which is always fun in the local government, so I do applaud you for that. I just was curious as a general statement, but I do support these. You're going back and making us competitive, so well done, as painful as creating these motion sheets can be.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilmember, Vice President Barr.
Denise, I want to understand one thing. You said they haven't had an increase since 2018. If I'm not mistaken, tell me if I'm wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, we approved an increase in 18 that had a three-year schedule, but there's some kind of kicker in there that's tied to the CPI or minimum wage or something that didn't kick in.
That is tied to the unemployment rate, and because the unemployment rate was so high, the state of Michigan did not increase the minimum wage. Therefore, the city did not increase wages of our temporary employees.
And what we approved at that time, I assume, was probably only three years, so it's for 18, 19, 20?
Right.
Okay. And it's tied to those years. It's not the type of thing that that keeps moving down and those raises would kick in when the minimum wage-
It's my understanding that if the director had not requested these specific increases, the city was going to approve the former increases that were in place, because the unemployment rate has fallen greatly, and we're just waiting to hear that the state's minimum wage will increase, but if for some reason it doesn't, Ms. Isaacson has ensured her employees that they will be seeing their increases by doing this.
I think this economy is showing us how worthless minimum wages are. I don't think it really means anything right now, but, so you're telling me that if this didn't pass, that increase may happen regardless?
It may happen, yes, because it was previously approved.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. I want to say that as we approve these, which are, you know, as everyone has said, it's needed in this environment, this is a new normal, blah, 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 blah. Do we have any kind of cap or whatever we're looking at, or is that up to the department? As I remember, when I was Treasurer, I could decide some of that with PRC, and then they would have to approve it. Is that still the process?
Yes, it is. Every request that comes before you has gone to PRC, and then to the mayor, and then to the commission, and then to the council.
Okay, so is it always, do we know? And this is unfair to ask you specifically. I employ 15 people in my store, and they're both part and full-time. And I'm relating that to myself right now, because what really hurt us is when they shut us down, more than it did with employees. And because I think employees, if, and you may know this better than I, they're, it's not only the money they're making, it's management style, it's if they're satisfied at work, if their work conditions are good, a lot goes into what an employee looks at, as well as those dollars. The dollars is the attraction, I guess, but, you know, I mean, when we go to the privates and other places, I haven't given out raises. I've given out some bonuses, but if I start giving out raises, I got to raise my prices. You're not going to like that. So, you know, in a small business, in a retail setting, we're very cautious at this point of how we handle those situations, yet increase our business and our bottom line. So I would caution us as we go on that certainly we have the most wonderful employees in Michigan, but by the same token, how do we evaluate that as time goes on, especially with the new normal? And I get it, that we can't find people, or we're not finding people in some of these types of jobs we're advertising, but I just had to say that because it's not always about the dollar. It's if you're happy or you're not happy, you know, clap your hands, you know what I mean, but that's an old song, yeah.
Through the chair. With particular generations, and I won't point them out, it's all about the dollars. That's what they're looking for right now, is the dollars. Our benefits are very competitive, we've maintained good benefits, and they're very competitive with other municipalities, where with our hourly rates, our salaries have not kept up quite so much, and as I explained to someone today, we're not looking to pay the most, right? We're not trying to be the highest, and we're not, but we certainly can't be the lowest. So we're just trying to do this a little bit at a time and step by step.
No, I appreciate it, and I had no problem moving it. I just, I wanted to get a feel of where you guys are coming from on that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we've had, have we had an approving? We have an approving offered, but not for consent or for consent?
However, however you want to do.
Consent. Consent. Anyone object to placing a consent?
Thank you.
All right, seeing none, we'll place it on consent. All right, item number four is a request to approve wage increase. This comes to us from the Department of Civil Service for assessment department classifications. And we have Ms. Mayer and Ms. Goslin, the director or our head assessor.
I'm going to let the city assessor take this one. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You have before you a request from our city assessor for her department. They did a comprehensive salary survey across many other communities and determined that we were definitely in the bottom percentage of salaries. Not only are we having a hard time retaining employees and attracting employees for this department, but it's a small, small group of people that can work in an assessing department, and the city assessor can explain that better than I can. But the certifications, I believe you said there are 400 maybe certified?
Less than 400 in the state of Michigan.
In the entire state, that we're trying to maintain full staff from that. So you've got a lot of data in front of you, and it was very comprehensive salary survey. They did a great job on this, and what would you like to add?
I mean, actually, the department is struggling to maintain full-time certified assessors. We have had an assistant assessor that has, two of them that have left, so, and they're going to other communities for higher salaries. The certifications range from one to four, and most of them are threes. There's not many level fours in the community, however, I have two that are working towards their fours, but as a level-three assessor, the salary compensation is just so much greater in other communities, and those communities don't have to be larger parcel communities, they can be townships. It just is how, because it's so finite, the pool that we have, they understand that they're one of a very small group of people, and because of that, the wages are very competitive. So I have a really good staff at this point, and I'd love to retain them. I have an assistant assessor that is going for his level four. I'm looking at a succession plan for this community, and these are the people. I'll say real quick to you now, last month, we just found out from the state of Michigan, we did our state review. It's a five-year, every five years they come in, and we received a perfect score. So that doesn't happen to many, and we're really, really proud of it, but I, it's hard to, it's hard to keep these young kids that, back in the day, these kind of people that have been there 30 years, they're no longer. They're retired, they've moved on to part-time positions, and the one that's in my office that's been there 30 years, she just likes it, she's going to stay because she's that gal. So, you know, to bring, this is the largest community in Wayne County, and this is a big community, and, you know, it needs to, it needs to, we need that competitiveness, and we need to have good quality people in place. So I'm requesting a, you know, a look at my study. I would also say that the department brings in 56% of the revenue from the general fund, and maintaining that and building that is, you know, part of our fiduciary responsibility.
Madam Chair. Yes, Toy, Donavick, Jolly, Jim. McCullough.
I just want to say I appreciate the assessing department. I worked very close in that department for, I think it was three years. Wouldn't want to do your job. It is, it's kind of a technical job that takes an exorbitant kinds of skill, and there, I'm hoping that we give them, and I'm not sure of this, do we give them any kind of allowance to go get that level three or four or whatever? Because I know we have to maintain certain ones, and I think we do, don't we? Yeah.
We do have some school funding.
Yeah, we have education.
That department has always been run outstanding. Judy Nagy was outstanding, you served under Judy and was trained by Judy, and, you know, it's our pride and joy, that department. You know, it really is, and you deserve whatever you can do to maintain those employees and that kind of morale in there. And so, once again, me, that doesn't like to spend a lot of money, I'm going to offer an approving, but no cars, no.
We don't have one.
No, no bets, okay? But in all seriousness, so they really do, Madam President and others, do a fine job in that department, and you deserve the very best, you really do. I mean, all the other departments in the city are good too, don't get me wrong, but I know the kind of work you guys put in. Thank you. So lower my assessment. No, I'm teasing. I'm only kidding. Just kidding. Just joking.
Donavick, Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. My comments are basically the same on the gen item prior, but I do have a question. What is the full staffing number for your department?
Currently, it's seven.
Seven. What is the full staff number?
We have one vacant position, and so a total staffing would be eight employees. We have currently two part-time employees.
Okay, so six are supposed to be full-time? Okay. Well, one, congratulations on getting the score you got from the state. That's an awesome achievement. I know you guys do a lot of work in the assessing department. I do have a question real quick, though, but to Councilwoman Toy's point, in the private sector, I know it's different than municipal, costs are going to get increased because businesses are having to, their costs are increasing, so naturally that they're going to increase their prices of goods. A department like yours, are you going to have to increase the prices on when a resident comes in and grabs, you know, a assessing folder, and normally it costs 10 bucks, and now it's going to cost $15? Are those sorts of things, those happen or no?
I know, I don't foresee that happening. We have all of our data online, so rarely do we have someone come in and ask for their assessment, and if it is, it's a dollar.
Okay, well, thanks for answering my questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have a lot of questions in regards to this, and it's more from my personal understanding. So I'm going to start with, it says in the letter in our packet that the anticipated budget increase would be for only $23,000, but if I look at the current top levels for these positions and the levels requested, it's hard to see how you would not exceed $23,000 in different budget funding. So that's my first question. My second question is, are the positions listed here represented by a union? In the previous wage increases that we had come before us recently, they were not necessarily full-time employees such as these, so are they represented? And then my third question would be, if there's only 400 of these so people out there who are qualified, I can appreciate that, what is the, what is the path you would encourage people going into college to study to become somebody who could do one of these jobs later on? Like, what is a typical background, educationally speaking? I don't think city assessing is a major in college, right? So what kind of backgrounds do these people have before they come into the field? So three questions there.
Okay, so that one, the requirements are, other than having a GED, you then can get your certifications. I will say, from the inception of a level-one to a level-four, and they're identified differently as acronyms, but the MCAT to the master assessor is a four-year program. So initially, it's similar to an undergrad degree. So that answers that question. The page 26 is the proposed budget amendment that I prepared. This is what, an example of the part-time assessor, the original current salary that will be in 2022, and the proposed salary is the 60,000. So each one of those are the differences. The property appraisers, some of those are already in the midst of that salary, because they've been with me a while, that they're not starting at the beginning salary. So my budget for 2022, and this is not asking for, to go back, this is asking to be proposed. My proposed budget for salary only is a $391,152. That difference of the 414 is a $23,000. So each person may be in the midst of the proposed steps.
Okay. And then the represented question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
And then, are these employees, are they represented?
They are not in the union.
Okay.
No. There is a position in the union, it's property appraiser one, but I, that position is vacant at this time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to commend you on the amount of information and detail to the packet. Honestly, I love my little civic clerk, and to go through it and to see all these charts was phenomenal. And it really does show justice on where we stand currently to the neighboring community. So not to go any further, but very awesome, and appreciate all the work into it.
Thank you very much.
I just, I have a question. Could you, Ms. Goslin, again, the staffing, the staffing in assessing is?
The current staffing in my department?
Please.
Yes.
Please.
I have six full-time employees and two part-time. I'm sorry, I have five full-time employees and two part-time.
And are the, are the part-time people in the process of becoming certified as- And are the, are the part-time people in the process of becoming certified as, or what are their jobs? Do they do assessing work?
Every, every staff member is certified. In order to work in the department, you have to be certified at at least the minimum of a MCAT or a level one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that's, we had this offered for approving on the consent, is that correct?
Yes.
Any objections? All right, we'll place that on the consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This brings us to item number five. This is a request to approve hero pay stipend. This comes to us from the Department of Civil Service for regular active, full-time and regular active part-time employees.
This item was on the Civil Service Commission meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it was approved by the commission and moved to the council. It's a communication from the mayor's office. The mayor is requesting your support in providing a hero pay stipend of one thousand dollars for each regular active full-time employee and five hundred dollars for each regular part-time employee. And it would include all employees hired before June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. The significance of that date is that all restrictions, COVID restrictions, were lifted on June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. And it, it is with the exception of employees in those classifications who already received hazard pay under the CARES Act in two thousand and twenty, or those in elected positions. Funds are available through the American Rescue Plan, and stipends of this nature are permitted under the interim final rule issued by the Department of Treasury. It would cost, the, the hero pay stipend would cost approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars. It would probably be less than that because we've had employees leave since June twenty-third, or two, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. And it would be funded by utilizing a portion of the American Rescue Plan funds that are budgeted for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I can appreciate that this is being brought before us. My question is really, in terms of a long-term implication for employees, and I don't even know how many there would be, but current employees that are in the existing defined benefit pension program, would this bonus be calculated into their final average wage comp, uh, for their multiplier?
No, it would not.
Is that, is that explicit somewhere, or not?
Anything that is calculated into their final average earnings is, is negotiated. So it's already in the contract, and this, this is not in the contract, so.
So, so you're confident in that being the case?
Not a hundred percent, but.
Okay, so I would just, I would like to know that because I, I understand that this is federal funding. They would largely be supporting this. But when we look at, you know, long-term pension obligations, things like this are not accounted for and accurately adding to the pot of money to pay them out for, right? So if you can check on that question, I would appreciate that.
We are, the, the unions we would be talking about in this case are FSCME one-ninety-two and FSCME nineteen-seventeen. And I believe their, their final average compensation is on base wages only. But I can, I will get that confirmed for you.
I just, I would appreciate that, thank you. Otherwise, I, I'm in su, in support, and even, I'm not saying whatever the answer may be there, I'm just curious what the implication would be. So, thank you.
Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. So for hero pay, you mentioned that electeds can confirm electeds will not be getting the hero pay.
That's correct.
Whether you're a city council part-time or whether you're the full-time mayor, treasurer, clerk?
That's correct, because elected offic, elected positions require the Livonia Officers' Compensation Commission approval.
Just wanted to confirm, does that also mean that the commissions, planning commissioners or arts commissioners, et cetera, they will also not be getting this?
That's correct.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
No, you.
Oh, me?
Vice President, but he deferred to you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, a couple of questions. Were most of these employees paid at the time that COVID was going on? I know a lot of them worked from home. Were they making their normal salaries at that time? Or were they, there was any deductions for any reason? Were they making their true salary at those times?
We had numerous employees that, when, when the shutdown happened in March, went home and continued working full-time. So they were paid their normals, normal pay. We also had employees eventually that were, were requested to go on furloughs, unpaid furloughs. So they would go on unemployment, and they also received the extra federal six hundred dollars per week, federal unemployment. And they did that at the request of the city. And we had some volunteers that did that. But then in July, everyone came, everyone came back, right? Even those, those that were on furlough, they came back to work. People that, people that were working from home continued to do so because it was just, it wasn't yet considered as, you know, very safe, and it was just the right thing to do to try to avoid the virus. So there were people that were on unemployment, and there, there were also people, Councilwoman Toy, that were afraid to work. Right? So they, so they stayed home, and they also collected unemployment. So there was a, there was really a mix. But there were a great number of people that kept working and kept things going, and.
Sure. And on the unemployment, if they made six hundred dollars extra, or whatever, in, in some cases, I gotta believe, and I heard, that that was maybe more money than they were getting in a normal salary. And that's true of the world beyond us here.
That's correct.
So, you know, it was really kind of a bonus kind of thing at that point.
There were some classifications, there were some classifications that made more money with the federal unemployment, not, not the state. Because the state, the maximum for the state, as you know, is three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars a week.
Right.
So.
Okay, so do we have other examples of other cities that are taking their money and spending it in this direction with employees? Do we know offhand?
I don't know.
Is there other examples? Is Westland doing it? Is Repford doing it? Is Midland doing it?
That I don't know.
Okay. If we could find that out, because I'd like this to go on the regular, you know, not to begrudge anyone, but just to understand it. And then, help me understand, you mentioned something about some three-hundred-and-some-thousand this would cost. Some of that money would come from the feds, it sounds like. Where's the rest of the money coming from?
All of that money, all of that money would come from the American Rescue Plan funds.
Okay. So from our grandchildren, basically. I won't have any, but that's okay. But I'm just saying, sorry, Jim, but.
I do believe all us taxpayers pay for that.
It's like you have more kids.
If he can have more kids.
Right. Trying to help you all out here.
No, I'm just trying to understand it so that it's clear, you know, to us and to me and to others that will question me upon what we do, obviously, publicly. So, and since we're in the midst of all that fun stuff, I want to make sure that we get those questions answered. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Vice President Barr.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, the people that went on furlough, are they gonna get this bonus?
Yes. This bonus is slotted for anyone that was hired before June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. And the furlough lasted approximately three and a half months.
Did, to your recollection, did anybody in City Livonia lose their job because of the pandemic?
Only if it was voluntary.
Okay. And I think you already said that those that were able were allowed to work from home during all this, right?
That's correct.
Nobody had a disruption.
That's correct.
You said those that received a bonus like this through the CARES Act will not be eligible for this. Who was that?
That was public safety.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but, and I know that would have come through here, but I don't always remember things clearly, so. So if I can just repeat back what, or not repeat back, but as far as I see it, well, let me ask you one more question. And the question's making a point, but you're the one before me, so I have to ask a question to you. Can you make the case for me why there's something unique about the non-public safety City Livonia employees relative to all of our taxpayers that worked throughout this pandemic from home or in the office?
Well, as being one of those employees, I believe that the people that kept working through the pandemic, especially in the beginning, went above and beyond. They stepped out of their comfort zone, they were suddenly, the doors were shuttered, we had to go home. We had never worked from home before. I had never worked from, from home before. And I worked, I was busier at home because of all the questions about COVID. And I wasn't the only one. We also had custodians who continued working over at the police department and the fire department. They came in and, and continued to do their job. So the people that stepped up and worked throughout the pandemic did just that. They stepped up. They stepped up, they worked hard, they didn't raise their hand for the furlough, even though we looked for, for volunteers to do that, and we appreciated that because that saved the city money at the same time. But truly, Vice President Barr, this was unprecedented situation, and everybody continued to do their job, and they did it well. And I really believed they worked harder when they worked from home.
You don't have to persuade me of that. I did that, as did anybody else up here with a full-time job. I, we have people that went on furlough, some of whom made more money because of the enhanced unemployment benefits, and yet we're gonna give them a bonus. We have people that kept their jobs throughout the pandemic while many other people were losing their jobs throughout the pandemic. We have people who, just as you just described, was no different than what the rest of the country did, those that were fortunate enough to keep their jobs. I, I'm not begrudging anybody anything, but I don't think the American Rescue Plan was intended, certainly by, well, maybe it was, but by its name, it doesn't sound like a rescue plan. I'm not sure, again, much appreciation for everybody that worked, much appreciation for what, what everybody did. But as far as I'm concerned, the city made all necessary accommodations to protect our employees. And, and our employees, and I'm grateful for this, were able to keep their jobs, when many people did not. I, I struggle with, I struggle with using funds wherever they're coming from for this purpose. So I think it's already been asked to have it on the regular, and I'm grateful for that. Thanks.
Have we had, what, what was asked to be on the regular? I don't believe.
When we have a motion.
Pardon me?
When we have a motion.
Okay, but we don't have.
No, we don't.
We don't have a motion right now.
I thought somebody had offered a motion.
Go both ways if you want a motion.
I'd like it both ways.
Yeah.
Okay.
Denying for me.
Okay. Um, Councilmember.
Can I just tack onto that?
Oh, yeah, please.
Sorry, I, no, I was, I was, sorry, Brandon. It's just, it's important, again, I, it's, folks, it's easy to sit up here on this council and say yes and smile when people come and ask for these things. That's easy to do. Our job here is to look out for the taxpayers. And we've got a lot of taxpayers out here who struggled through this pandemic, and I'm, and we all struggled to some extent. But to use taxpayer money for this, where, where I think the, you know, the CARES Act stuff, the public safety, when we talk about our doctors and nurses that work in the hospital, that's perhaps a different conversation, but that's been handled. I, I just struggle to see the distinction here between our taxpayers, who all did the same thing and aren't getting hero pay. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. To the chair, to Denise, just a quick question. I think you might have already covered it. But this is a hundred percent right through the, the, the government. This is nothing that's coming out of the city's general fund or anything like that. Well, yeah. And the other question I do have, and I don't know if it's a way to maybe gain some information, I know we've got a little over eight million dollars part of this that, that got allocated, which, accord, you know, looking over our, our neighbors, and I, I think we got the short end of the stick on that. So the question that I have is, I know we've allocated certain amounts of funding, and I know not all of it's gonna come to the stipend. To the stipend, I'm in support of it. It is tough to, when you look at it, but between the vaccination clinics, between everything that we've done and that was innovative, and I totally agree with the taxpayer and everything, but some of the services, I think this stipend will go a long way. The people that were furloughed, I knew, I mean, they did lose benefits, they did lose funding. So this little bit could help them just with day-to-day life, in theory, should I say that. But I don't know if there's possibility to see what was allocated so far, or what's coming down the pipeline by next meeting for the, the rest of the funding. If there's anything that has been secured, that would be good information to maybe be included for the next meeting, if possible.
Okay. I will see. I'll look into that.
And we do have motions, right?
Yep. Yeah, we have approving and denying. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'll just say, I welcome that we're having a wholehearted discussion in regards to this and the validity of it. I'll just point out, too, that in regards to the situation who was working, the clerk's office had an epic election that was unprecedented as well. And I mean, I think that deserves consideration in regards to this argument as well. And I think some of the numbers were, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think some days, three hundred to close to a thousand people at the counter, is that correct?
Right. And we also remained open because we do all of the death records. We never once closed our office to the public.
And so I, I think just in terms of, obviously, we talk about hospital workers and stuff like that, who were clearly on the front line. Some of our very own employees on this floor were very much in, on the front line in terms of exposure and potential hazards as well. So like I said, I, I welcome, and we are doing what is required of us and appropriate of us by discussing this fully. But I think there's strong arguments to be made for it as well. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Donavick.
Thanks, Madam President. I, I'd like to note that I wish we were talking about voting for this American Rescue Plan because I don't believe, I think it's, I think it's been unwise to spend this sort of money at a federal level. I think that the money doesn't have to be spent or allocated for another few years, and doesn't have to be spent for a few years after that. So I, I wish we were having a discussion to the validity of this, what this money is, is being used for, and the fact that we as taxpayers are gonna be paying for it for a very long time. However, the money is here. I don't like that it's here, but it is here. So how we spend that, the money has to be spent. So I think that's a good thing that we're having a discussion tonight. But I do understand that, that this has become common now, giving the hero pay. And, and I'm grateful, of course, I mean, I was working through the whole thing. Many people were working through the whole thing, so I understand that. But the money's here, and we have to spend it. I'd, I'd rather spend it on our people than some other project because our people are the ones that make up our community and serve our residents. But again, I want to be on the record that I don't like that this money's here, and I wish the money was never given out the way it's been given out. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm also going to ask for committee of the whole. I think this subject matter is a little bit deeper than what we're given a credit for. I really think that we need to analyze this a bit more. It's been said by some of my colleagues that it's interesting that we're having these discussions. And I think Ms. Mayor did bring up some of the people that did work at home. But I also see a problem ahead of how would you separate? I know the clerk's office, all, a lot of the laws, a lot of the rules have changed for them, and so it's made their job immensely crazy over there. And I'm sure you've heard it from our clerk, because I know I've heard it from her, you know, that there's a lot more to what's going on in that clerk's office than we're used to because of the changes and because of the COVID. But to blanket out all this money, and you know what I'm saying? I just, I just wonder if there's some deeper kinds of thoughts to it, what others are doing, if it's been done by others, whether it's in Michigan, whether it's out of state. I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to get my arms around it, and it's not that, again, we're begrudging anyone. I gave my employees a bonus during that time because they don't make as much money as they do here. But I'm just saying, with some of the fringes and things that people get, and they deserve it. But I just, I want to make sure we're on safe ground. And not that I don't think you're bringing us a bunch of hogwash here, I, I get it. But I'm, I'd like to, I'd like to pause and look at this a little bit deeper, I think, than just right here, for my comfort level. Others, you know, have their vote on it, too.
So you're offering an additional?
I, I am, I'm offering additional committee of the whole, Madam Chair.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
Just, just one more, or two more quick comments. Number one, I just, for, for everybody here and for anybody watching, just want to remind you that this money doesn't have to be used for this purpose. There are a lot of things this money can be used for. So, so it's not like we have to use it for this. I just wanted to clarify that. And number two, I just, Councilwoman Toy brings up an interesting point. I, you know, one, one advantage of putting this in committee, I, I don't know if that's what I'm going to vote to do yet, but one advantage of that would be that we could hold this off until we look at what the plan is for that entire thing. And we may be having a. And we may be having, there may even be people on this council that think differently about this if they're looking at it relative to what the opportunities are to use it for other things. So I don't know what those would be, but there could be some merit to that, Councilwoman Toy, and I thank you for bringing up that option.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Burnier. So, normal circumstances, right? We are prohibited, the city is prohibited, from paying bonuses to employees. Is that correct?
I don't know the honest answer to that. I don't think that's true because I know there's not different. I know when I was with Wayne County, Wayne County paid bonuses for certain things, but I'm not going to suggest that that was necessarily done correctly. I would have to, I would have to look into that.
And the reason I ask is I know that there are a lot of, and maybe, maybe I'm just thinking of the fact that guidelines on spending, right, like, you know, you can't, you can't spend money to buy employees lunch, right? The city can't fund, like, an employee lunch, is my understanding. So I thought that that extended to any sort of supplemental payment. So I may be wrong.
I will say this. I read the interim final rules that the federal government, whatever, like my.
But not with respect to this. I'm asking, like, normal times.
I would have to look, but I know I have heard of many jurisdictions giving bonus pay for different things. I don't think there's, I don't think that there's any prohibition against it, but I wouldn't want to give an opinion on it without researching.
Okay. My other question is, would this contractually, due to our, due to our represented employees, would this have to be offered to all employees? Like is proposed, as the mayor's proposing?
Well, it would require an LOU, a letter of understanding with both 192 and 1917, and that would be something we would have to.
So Denise is the answer then, yes, that it?
No, no, the answer is we would have to negotiate it with the unions.
Okay, because I think some very important points have been brought up here tonight. And to second what Vice President Barr said, no one begrudges our city employees anything, nor thinks that they're not outstanding. And I tell people all the time, right? One of the things I'm proudest about in this city, and after having worked with well over a dozen municipalities, not as an elected official, but back in a professional job, Livonia had one of the most outstanding workforces, every level, every department. There are significant differences in what we ask different employees to do. And I don't think we'd want to go name by name, right, and say, this person deserves it, this person doesn't. But I think when you look at what our custodians did, for example, they were working on the front lines, right, when we didn't have a lot of PPE, and, you know, or not, their pay classification, right, doesn't put them in one of the most highly compensated groups of employees in the city. I think there were certain departments, right, that had to continue to do things with the public. And I would really like to be able to break this apart a little bit and look at what we ask different employee groups to do, if that's possible. So. Sorry, we've had you up here for an awful long time.
I didn't think I would need it.
We should.
What's in it?
Sadly, it's just water.
And I'll also say that I understand that the mayor went through the proper channels with all of this to the commission and having you here. I would like to hear, I think, from the mayor, her thoughts as to why this should be offered to everyone. So I think that, to me, is an important element. But really appreciate you being here and answering these questions and bringing this to us.
I appreciate that.
Anyone else? All right, so we have a approving resolution, we have a denying resolution, and we have a referring to committee resolution. So unfortunately, Denise, that means you'll have to come back and see us in a few.
I'm sure I'm coming back anyway.
We want to see you as much as we can before you leave, and we know that you want to see us as much as you can.
Feelings mutual.
Anyway, thank you. And I would just like to say, and when I was talking about other departments, HR, and I do want to recognize, I think we've recognized it before, this city was one of the first to get out ahead of things with a furlough program. And I know that was spearheaded by the mayor and the administration, but I know it was your department that was called upon to execute that. And we were one of the first, and we did it in a way that we took advantage of timing of programs for our employees and the, your departments, talk about stepping up to make sure that our employees knew what was going on and what the program was. So when we were calling out departments, and again, we're not taking anything away from any department, but there were departments that were called upon to stop from here to here. So, and one other thing, just one other thing to add, we kept our transportation, we got our transportation program going, and the senior alliance kept asking me how we were doing it because they provide an emergency transportation program. They disabled it due to COVID concerns, and, you know, you understood their point. We kept doing it. You know, we kept having our drivers do it. So again, there were a lot of people that stepped up, and we're not suggesting that it wasn't a difficult time for everyone, but we asked different things of different departments by virtue of their jobs. So thank you.
Can I just clarify? All three of those were by Councilmember Toy, all three motions?
Gosh, I hope not.
Yes, they were.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, give it to Scott.
Approving, denying, committee of the whole.
Give one of those to Scott, please.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, Denise, for everything tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate all of you. Thank you, and Felicia and Linda, too, and for all the data and the studies that have been done. Okay. All right, now we move on to item number six. This is a waiver petition. This comes from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2021-07-02-11, submitted by Animal Care Clinic of Livonia to expand the existing veterinarian clinic at 28450 Joy Road, located in the northwest corner of Joy Road and Harrison Avenue in the southwest corner of Section 36. This is Mr. Mohammed Fakrulden? Is that close?
No, it's not.
Okay. Could you, could you help me? Could you help me, please?
Okay, my name is Dr. Tariq Najib. I'm with Professional Consultant Company. I am returned by the owner to design and engineer this project. My address is 169.
Excuse me, you're Dr. Tajib?
Najib.
Najib, I'm sorry. And how do you pronounce the name of the owner?
Dr. Mohammed.
Dr. Mohammed Fakrulden.
Oh, so I wasn't too far off on that one. Okay. All right. And your address, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
16970 West Warren, Detroit, Michigan, 48228.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask Mr. Teramina if you'd like to take us through them.
Yes, I will quickly go through this. I know the hour's late. So this is a request to expand an existing veterinary clinic. This property is at the northwest corner of Joy Road and Harrison Avenue. The zoning is C2 general business. The property is roughly a half an acre in size. As you can see, it has frontage on Joy about 93 feet, along Harrison 250 feet. Now, there's an existing building on the property. It's about 2,000, 2,100 square feet. This was actually built in the mid-'50s as a drugstore, Beck's Drugs, that was later converted to a coin laundry or a laundromat. And then it sat vacant for many years until last, well, excuse me, in 2016, when this petitioner presented a case to convert this to an animal clinic, a veterinarian clinic. It was approved, and today they're hoping to expand the clinic by constructing an addition onto the west side of the building. That addition would be roughly 1,200 square feet, so it would bring the building up to a total of about 3,300 square feet. The purpose of the addition is, as you would guess, would be to provide additional exam rooms as well as a surgery room, reception, waiting area, as well as a laboratory and indoor kennels. This building, as you can see from the aerial photograph, is right up adjacent to Joy Road. It does have a non-conforming setback, so any addition to the building is going to require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. The site presently has 12 parking spaces. The expanded property will require 14 spaces. They are in need of parking, so there isn't a planned expansion. So just to familiarize yourselves with the drawing, the one on the left is the existing conditions. The one on the right is the proposed expansion. You can see the larger building as well as the expanded parking lot. So they add about six parking spaces to the rear of the property. It does extend that parking lot back about 60 feet. There would still be roughly a 60-foot separation between the parking lot and the rear property line. One of the issues reviewed by the Planning Commission was the condition along that north property line. In 2016, the council approved the installation of a vinyl fence. That was approved by that neighbor. The Planning Commission, in its approving recommendation to you, has offered three different options to the petitioner. Either one, construct the wall; two, obtain a variance from the zoning board of appeals to permanently waive the requirement for the wall; or three, obtain approval to substitute a green belt in lieu of the wall. And that would still have to go back before the Planning Commission and City Council, but it's probably the petitioner's option to go with number three, and that is obtain the approval to substitute the green belt in lieu of the protective screen wall. Plan provides for additional landscaping. Issue of stormwater still has to be addressed by the engineering division. There are ongoing discussions. The design of the building itself is really in keeping with the existing architecture. They do add a new central feature. It's predominantly masonry along the lower portion of the building, as well as some EFS. The Planning Commission is recommending approval of the plan submitted. Thank you.
Madam President?
Councilmember Jolly, then Donavich.
If I may, each of you gentlemen refer to yourself as doctor. Are you both veterinary doctors, or no?
No, I'm, I'm a doctor in civil engineering, so.
Okay, so.
That's my special.
Okay, it was just, in my head, I couldn't, I, because you said you were hired to design the building.
Right.
And I was a little confused.
Right, I'm actually a professor at Wayne State, too, so that's, that's where, that's what that comes from.
Okay, so that clarifies that for me, right? So you're an engineer, and you are?
I'm the manager there. I'm not the doctor, but she was asking for the owner name, Dr. Mohammed. He's my brother.
I appreciate the clarification.
So Dr. Mohammed is the owner, and he's the vet, veterinarian doctor.
Okay. So, Mr. Teramina, I recall this coming before us before, and we approved improvements to be made to the property. Just to be clear, were those improvements that we approved completed at the time, or?
Yeah, the only deficiencies that were noted in the department reports involved the dumpster, and really, the placement of the dumpster was as it was approved on the original plan. The problem with that is, is that it was difficult to access. Then there were some, I think, some issue, an issue with the rear wall that needed to be repaired. Now, whether or not that was something that was never taken care of or resulted from damage, I'm not sure. But there was very few deficiencies, as noted by the departments, when they went through the review for this project. So, yes, it was, it was pretty much, as far as I can tell, developed the way it was approved in 2016.
So there is a track record of improving a property that needed to be improved?
Ms. Jolly, this property has been vastly improved over what its condition was in 2016. Yes, so kudos really to the, to the owners and the investment they've made to this property.
And I appreciate that. And so for the office manager, the doctor's brother?
Yeah, Akil.
Akil.
Oh, what's that? I'm sorry.
Akil, my name is Akil.
Akil?
Yeah.
Okay, Akil.
Yes.
Is the practice thriving?
Yes.
To the point where you are, you're really confident in investing this money to improve the facility?
Yes, definitely. I mean, our numbers have tripled, you know, the past couple of years, and we're improving, you know, year by year, you know. You know, we're averaging pretty good. As I said, this year, our numbers have tripled. You know, and we're not at the end of the year yet.
So my last question would be, have we heard, Mr. Teramina, have we heard from any neighbors who are opposed to this at all, at any step in the process, or no? I mean, I understand there would still be quite a buffer, but it does back up to residential properties. So have we heard from any of them?
Yes, I've had conversation with the neighboring property owner to the north. She did appear before the Planning Commission. She expressed her desire to have the fence replaced with a seven-foot-high masonry wall. That, I think, is the reason why the Planning Commission formulated that condition that I mentioned earlier about the option that is available to the petitioner to seek either the green belt, a variance, or construct a wall if they choose to do that. The other issue that she raised was drainage. Since that time, we've had some additional discussions with the doctor about how to handle the stormwater on the site. We believe there is a plan. In fact, Mr. Lear and I spoke about this today. So we think we can address the issue of stormwater. As it relates to the buffer along the north property line, that's something that will still have to more than likely come back before the Planning Commission and City Council for final approval.
So, last part here. If I were to offer an approving, in the approving, would I have to indicate a preference for the wall or the green belt, or would that be determined later on through the zoning board of appeals?
That could, it could be, either are. So if you wanted to indicate a preference for one or the other, then that's something that would carry with the, with the motion or with the approval.
So I'll offer.
If, on the other hand, you don't, then, then they'll still have that option as it's been submitted to you from the Planning Commission.
Okay, so I will approve it as it was submitted by the Planning Commission to be determined later on for the consent agenda, if there are no objections. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Donavich, and then Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I live right down the street, so I'm excited about this improvement. To Mr. Teramina's point, you know, the building has been improved over the last few years, but I do have some concerns. One, looking at the Google imagery, there has been, along the west side from the parking lot, a pathway now that cars have driven. Oftentimes, there's cars parked, even in the image right there. You have cars that will be parked, you know, in the actual portion between the city and Joy Road. It's clearly been, people have driven through there just to make a second, send second entrance and exit. So will that be addressed in the expansion? Will that be closed off some way so that cars are not able to just drive through there and create a dirt path? It just doesn't look well at all. Second question is in regards to the dumpster enclosure. I know Mr. Teramina briefly touched on it. There is a masonry dumpster enclosure currently, but you guys don't even, you don't use it, from my understanding. The dumpster has been placed outside of it, and I know there's been some discussion about it's been difficult for the garbage truck to get to it. Will that be relocated, and will that masonry wall, will it be masonry wall when you, if you relocate the dumpster enclosure? And will that be consistent with the material you're using on the building, the new bricks, brace, a new masonry?
Sure. I mean, just due to the expansion of the, the new expansion, that existing dumpster enclosure have to be relocated at a different spot. And of course, it'll be rebuilt with a masonry and some brick or maybe whatever the color of the facade. I mean, we have to have it, make it match, but for sure, it'll be in a better position where it's at right now. I do agree with you. When we started the design, I didn't like the location. So it's going to be in a better position, better location. As far as your concern on the cars driving, if we have to, we could probably put some barricades, maybe some.
If I may?
Go ahead.
This driveway that does not belong to us, this belongs to the building next door. So we have, you know, we have no access to it. We own like about 5% to 10% of it. And by putting that new building in, well, that is just going to be almost with the border of our building. But that driveway is not ours. You know, that parking space is next door to the restaurant. You know, the owner is the next door to the restaurant.
Okay, yeah, there you can actually get a better image of it. I see what you're saying. Your parcel would essentially border that pathway. And it just, I've noticed it's become a ratty pathway, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, we can't stop it. It belongs to next door, and, you know, that building was vacant for a while, but I know that it has a new owner now, and, you know, they're turning it into a restaurant or something. But unfortunately, it's been vacant for a while, and a lot of people have been accessing that, you know, that driveway. But we have no control over it, you know. Our survey says it's like, it doesn't belong to us, you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for answering my questions, thanks.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I, growing up in this area, I remember the, the old coin laundry and, and the dilapidated state that that was in. So just to commend you on the construction so far, the civil, just even redoing the asphalt park drive and parking lot. So I have no doubt that the addition that you guys do will be a very pleasant addition to the, the current, the current plot. My question, just to clarify, and it's in the notes, and through, through the chair to the petitioner, there is no boarding overnight stay with these, with this current expansion?
No, no.
Okay, just to touch base on that, I know that that-
If you look at the floor plan, there are gonna be, actually, there's more requirements for that, so you couldn't do that, that, I mean, the expansion's only a thousand square foot, just to give them extra offices to, to see or, you know.
Okay.
You know, to treat dogs and things like that.
And, and then I think that expansion, yeah, I, I like everything about it, and I know we were discussing this, but if approved, you guys are gonna be rocking and rolling on this pretty quick, you wanna start this.
Yeah, the doctor wants to finish this before the end of the year.
Very cool, very cool. Well, again, thank you for what you've done to that, to that corner. I, I think it's a great improvement, and I look forward to, if, if this gets approved, to seeing the buckets in the ground, and hopefully, we have a mild fall so you can get it done.
Sure.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. Much congratulations to you, and thank you so much for improving this area.
Thank you.
Really, really appreciate it. I, I just wanna say to you, I wish there wasn't more hoops they gotta go through so that they could get started, but rules are rules and laws are laws, but make sure you get a hold of that zoning board so you can get in there and, you know, get your stuff moving, as Councilmember McCullough said, so that by the winter, you're all up and running. Vets are terribly needed right now. There's so many people that can't get in with their animals and things. So the faster we can get you up and running, it'll help our citizens in the surrounding area as well. So thank you for doing what you're doing, sirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have an approving offered for consent, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right. Any more questions? All right, that means you don't have to come back in two weeks or a week and a half. All right?
Thank you, Madam President.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and our final item tonight is a site plan petition. This comes through from the Planning Commission, petition two thousand and twenty-one dash zero seven dash zero eight dash zero four, submitted by the Kroger Company of Michigan. Requesting approval to redevelop portions of the commercial shopping center North Ridge Commons, including demolishing approximately twenty-two thousand square feet of existing retail space, constructing addition to the Kroger store measuring approximately twenty-eight thousand five hundred square feet, as well as other facade and parking lot improvements at three three five two three through three three seven five one Eight Mile Road, located on the south side of Eight Mile Road between Farmington and Gill Roads in the northeast quarter of Section Four. Good evening.
Good evening.
And I think Mr. Terramina will lead this by giving us an overview of the project.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, a request by the Kroger Company to expand their store located at North Ridge Commons, which is on the south side of Eight Mile, just west of Farmington Road. This property is roughly fourteen and a half acres. We've highlighted the area of the shopping center, even though it does include and is not part of the bounded area shown here, the gas station, and Arby's and a PNC bank. So we're looking really just at the shopping center complex, and Kroger, as you know, is the largest tenant within the shopping complex. And what this proposal would do would, it would remove roughly twenty-one thousand, almost twenty-two thousand square feet of existing retail space at the southwest corner of the shopping center, and then replace these areas with about a twenty-eight thousand square foot addition to the Kroger store. So this would increase the size of the Kroger to roughly seventy-six thousand square feet. It would increase the overall retail complex to about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet. As you can imagine, that kind of work is gonna require substantial renovations, not only to the exist, the interior of the existing store, but also the, the exterior. The Planning Commission has, has reviewed this in, in detail. I'll just highlight a couple of the main features to the plan. So the Kroger would be extended further to the south. All of the receiving areas along the back of the store would remain in their current location. This plan kinda highlights the expansion area to, on the south side of the, of the store. You'll note that there's an area for grocery pickup. This will be a designated area near the south end of the store for clients or patrons to have their groceries delivered to them out or into the parking lot. The plan also includes a small pharmacy drive-up at the south end of the, of the building. Fully detailed floor plans are included with the application. I won't go into those because they're, they're quite detailed, but it's a full remodel of the inside of the store, as well as the exterior of the store. This is the overall plan. The, the main entrance is centrally located along the storefront. This is a blow-up showing how that pickup area would operate, and the, there's a representative here from Kroger who can explain that further if you desire. There's the floor layout, but this is the elevation. So this is what the new, the building would look like along the east elevation or the east side, and you can see the main entrance is kind of, is framed by the wood, wooden, silver-finished corrugated panels, that kind of that archy design over the, the main entrance. You'll also see dark gray, as well as a black color, so there, there's a combination of metal panels, painted ephes and painted brick, as well as composite materials, all coming together in the, in the finished design. This would include the back of store as well, in terms of new finishes. As far as parking is concerned, this is one of the benefits of the Livonia Vision twenty-one zoning ordinance. Under the old ordinance, they would have been deficient about twenty-eight parking spaces, but under the new ordinance, they'll actually have a surplus of sixty-four spaces, so no need to go to the zoning board of appeals for parking in, in this case. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or turn it over to the petitioner.
Councilmember Jolly.
Just to shore it up, I wanna say thank you. It's actually, it's not often that I get excited about things happening at strip malls in our city, but you're really kind of shoring up this, this particular site and making a vast improvement to it. That's not only gonna be an immediate benefit, but hopefully will help the remaining structures on the site as well attract additional tenants. I know it's been a, I presume, I don't wanna speak with authority here, but from my understanding, it's been kind of difficult to fill those remaining stores there. So Kroger making this benefit here and providing the site plan for what it looks like, I think it's great. So I'll be supporting it. I'll offer an approving for consent. While I have you up here, you've been sitting here for quite a while. You sat here for part of the discussion in regards to hero pay, and people were thankful for, over the course of the last year and a half or so, so I'll offer my thanks to your employees for the work that they did and the, the steps they took during the pandemic to get everybody through as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm listening to, I'm not sure if we gave you a chance to introduce yourself.
I did not, yeah. My name's Mike McPherson. I am with Atwell. I'm the civil engineering consultant for Kroger.
Okay.
I've got representatives from Kroger and from the shopping center owner as well tonight to answer any-
Mr. Atwell, could you give us your address, please, for the record? It can be your business address.
Two, Two Town Square, Suite seven hundred, Southfield, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. And just, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but maybe since they took the time to come, you could, we could meet the representatives from-
Sure.
Kroger and the owner. Is that still, is it still Grand Saquon, still the owner of the site? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Garrett Foley, I'm the construction manager for Kroger, four zero three nine three Grand River Avenue, Novi, Michigan.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Foley.
It's a long ways up. Bill Eisenberg, Grand Saquon Properties, twenty-eight four seven oh thirteen Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. It's a pleasure to be before you once again after a long hiatus. But we, we've worked on this shopping center since we purchased it a little over four years ago, and it's, it's really coming around nicely now, and with the Kroger expansion, we're, we're really excited about the opportunity.
Great. Councilmember Danovic, and then McCullough. Or McCullough, were you next? Did I indicate you were next?
Perhaps, fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Councilmember McCullough. Thank you, Madam President. Like Councilman Jolly said, thank you guys for what you're doing. This is really awesome to look at, the rendering is very modern. I think it'll definitely be a staple Kroger, that other Krogers in the media area will look at and say, we wanna look like that, and I'm happy that that's here in Livonia. For you, sir, there was a comment earlier about this may help bring in tenants to that area. Is that a part of the, the rest of the whole strip mall? Do you have, I know there's been improvements over time. Is there a general consensus move for that you want the rest of the strip mall to look just like this and get more tenants? Or if, you don't have to answer all those questions, I don't wanna give away your trade secrets, but.
Well, as you're probably aware, we, we, we lost the Bird Fitness, they went bankrupt during the pandemic. We're actively working on replacing them. Other than that, we would be at a hundred percent occupancy with the Kroger expansion, so.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
It's come a long way, and, you know, we have our architect, Rob Boyne Associates, working on the north side of the center, where the small shop spaces. We're, we're trying to match the, the new Kroger elevation, so it, it, when, when you round the corner, it'll all look the same.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to the petitioner. And maybe this is through to Mr. Toramina. I'm trying to find the, I got a few questions. The limits of construction, does that have a lot of civil to the existing parking lot? Or is it just kind of, I guess, focused in the area of the demo plan?
Yeah, I mean, if you have a copy of the plan in front of you, there's a layout plan in there, and pretty much anything with a hatch would be an impacted area, whether it be parking lot or, or building. There'll be a fair amount of pavement replacement, especially along the front of the building, all-new sidewalk along the front, because the whole, the facade is completely being basically taken off and replaced along the front there, so. It'll, it'll look, it'll, it'll look new.
No, that's, that's great. The other, the other question, why I have you there, is the drive-through pharmacy. What is the dri, I don't see any, how do you access that? Do you have to come?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a single lane, and, you know, there's not, typically, a drive-through pharmacy is not a ton, ton of stacking, right? It's not a, it's not like a Chick-fil-A or something like that.
Traffic plan there?
But, yeah, essentially, there's plenty of room. That, that's a thirty-foot wide drive-out coming around the south side there, so customers could come along the front of the building and, and turn, and turn through, there's plenty of room for that motion, or if they come from the rear, they can also come in that direction. There's, for a typical passenger vehicle, there's plenty of room for them to make those maneuvers.
Perfect. No, that was, those were my two construction-related questions. The, the fun questions I have are, I think this is super innovative, the expansion, again, to echo, thank you for, thank you Kroger for, you know, choosing Livonia to do this expansion. I love the fact that we have kind of this new and innovative development. Every meeting, I think I say, you know, Livonia is a built-out city, and we've gotta be innovative with the current development we have, and I think, again, this is proof, especially with the, the ten or twelve, you know, basic, people are ordering off their phones, you guys are dropping it off. You know, the expansion itself, it's just incredible, and plus the Vision twenty-one, this is where it comes into play. You know, we cut a little bit of hoops and allow you to get to, get to work if approved. The last question I do have is, if approved, when are you guys looking to break ground?
Yeah, I, you know, and talking, we were talking about that earlier. I mean, the hope is to potentially start some of the, there's, there's gotta be some utility relocation and some things, maybe to get to that this fall yet, but likely the majority of the work will start next spring and be done next year.
Exciting. No, very cool, thank you very much.
Councilmember Toy.
Just real quick, I don't often shop at that Kroger. I live nearer to Merriman Road Kroger. I'm unaware, have you done anything on the interior of that as well, of the Kroger there?
The Merriman Road one?
No, the Eight Mile one, the one we're talking about.
Are we doing anything to the interior?
Yeah, you're gonna do a whole lot, right?
Interior's gonna be completely, completely brand new.
That'll be awesome.
The whole thing.
Okay. I didn't think Mr. Eisenberg would do this without having you do everything. He's not like that, he does quality stuff.
Actually, that, that Kroger was, it's, it's been well-maintained. I mean, it's, it's got new fixtures, new paint jobs. It's, it's, Kroger's done a nice job there, and it does a very nice volume.
Yeah, they, it, good service, good product, products, thank you for all you do. Your stocks, your shelves are usually stocked, unlike a few other places I've been lately, but thank you, thank you for doing business in Livonia. We really do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, so that's on consent. You don't need to come back and see us, but you're always welcome, and again, thank you for making this investment. We're excited to see what's going on at the Plaza, and we do appreciate the investment in, in Livonia, and Livonia appreciates having Kroger here, and also your, I can never remember what it's called, the Michigan Dairy, right, which is owned by, I believe that's still owned by Kroger, is that correct? And you had a great open house there a few years ago, so thank you.
I cannot speak to that, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Welcome. We appreciate, we appreciate your time tonight, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
And anyone from the audience, like, communicate with the council? All right, so none? They are adjourned at ten oh two.